Hey, good evening and welcome to the regular meeting of the Worcester City Council. It's April 15th, 2019. Hopefully you got your returns in or your extensions filed. It's after 7:30 PM. The next meeting is scheduled for Monday, May 6th, 2019, if I looked at my calendar correctly. Mr. Paolo, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Ansel.
Here.
Mr. Bostanzic.
Here.
Mr. Cavan.
Here.
Mr. Myers.
Here.
Mr. Sanders.
Here.
Mr. Silvestri.
Here.
Ms. Warden.
Here.
Everyone is here, so we have a quorum. The agenda will remain as presented. At this time, I would ask you to stand and join the members of City Council in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all.
I would appreciate a motion to approve the minutes of the April 1st, 2019 council
meeting.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Silvestri to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Myers. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. The minutes are approved for April 1st. Mr. Mayor, welcome. We look forward to what you have to say. Hopefully it's brief, since we had a long meeting prior to this. In fact, I was going to start counting off minutes for every minute, Joel and our recently -- he's not here. Recently discovered magpie. I've never heard Roger speak at such length and so eloquently. Anyways, welcome Mayor and...
It's been a long tax season, hasn't it?
Yes, it has.
Yeah, frankly, today I would rather be home, but here I am. I agree with that statement, so we wrap it about this. First off, I would want to say thank you to our infrastructure team that you had a chance to hear here at Council. You see the expertise and the knowledge that we have in our city structure and how the things aren't just sort of pulled out of the breeze to put in front of you. There's an awful lot of research and thought and time that goes into any of the decisions that we bring forward to Council. So, thank you to Joel and Roger and Kurt Denning and that whole crew. They do a super job for us. One thing I just want to bring to all of your attention is we have not moved forward in any way, shape, or form with the Compensation Committee. It's just, I know you circulated a list of people, but I've not been said yet, "Let's move forward with this." So, the clock's really ticking on this, and we are way behind where we were in previous years. So, the sooner we can get something, myself and my team will make the contacts if that's what the Council wants and try to get the numbers for that committee. By the charter, it has to have nine members, four from one party and five from the other is what the charter says. So, the sooner we get started, though, the better we will have a decision come out of that group that can be usable, all right? I want to bring to your attention, we do have a benefit ride that has been put together by the Steering Committee for our bike trails. This is happening on May 19th of this year. It goes from our Public Square down to Fredericksburg, where the Rails to Trail Bike Trail starts and back again. It's going to be a fun ride, and it is a fundraiser for getting money so that we can get connected and signed to that trail down there. Sue Smale and I have sort of a fun bet, Cochie House Pizza, to who can raise over $1,000 to put towards this. So, if you want to help my cause, you can make funds or give funds to the Wayne County Community Foundation. It's a 501(c)(3) tax deductible donation. And in the memo line, write Wayne Trails, and if you want to help me so I don't have to buy the pizza, put Bob on that line, and if you want to help Sue, you put Sue on that line. So, it's just sort of a fun competition to try to raise money for a good cause. If you want to ride in it, you sign up electronically, and it's $25 a person to do the ride, and they'll have t-shirts and food and things all along the course to help. So, please keep that in mind if you want more information, I'm happy to get it to you, all right? And lastly, just came out today, new bus schedule here in town. It's going to have a map to go with it, but this almost doubles the pickup times and the routes available to people in our city. This is still being done through Worcester Transit. It's not something that the city has to subsidize in any great fashion. We do have some ridership available, but this is not our bus system. It's a private bus system, and then we do help subsidize the low to moderate income type of rides. So, it's a great thing for Worcester. Worcester Transit has done a really nice job for us, and it's been a great association with them and community action, which helps us on the things. With that, I'm...
Before you sit down, would you want to introduce the new face, since he didn't get introduced? I know he was introduced at the infrastructure, then we can catch him on camera, so we can prove he exists.
This is our new utilities manager for the city of Worcester. His name's Nate Coe. He comes to us from the Columbus area, Sunbury, but he actually started life in Worcester and then grew up in Loudenville and graduated Loudenville High School, right? And he's been down in the Columbus, Sunbury, Pataskala. Thank you, that was the one I was -- I knew it was the Tomato area, but I couldn't remember the name. Pataskala area, running utilities down there. He's in charge of all our water, sewer, and pipelines in Worcester. And Nate's been with us since about November of last year, but a great guy. He knows the subject well and has brought a lot of new ideas and information into the community already. So, hopefully he'll be able to do some sort of presentation in front of Council at some point, just to give you what goes on in utilities, because it's pretty fascinating. So, Nate, anything you'd like to tell Council?
Happy to be here. Nice to meet you all, and I would welcome any opportunity to get before you and share all the great things that we're doing. So, put me on the list, or if there's a registration, I'm more than happy to jump in. Nice to meet you all, and if you ever need anything, you're usually easy to find.
Oh, welcome. He's one of those small, you know, so let's sit stand in the corner kind of guys. Not. Nate is one of the team players out there and making it happen. So, thank you, Nate.
Welcome.
And with that, Mr. Byten Dyke, it is back to you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We have no petitions and no one signed up. That brings us to committee reports. We did have an Infrastructure Committee, which was chaired by Mr. Bostanzic. You want to give us a brief summary, at least for the folks that weren't in attendance and obviously for the folks that are going to watch this later on?
Sure. Thank you. We had an Infrastructure Committee an hour before the meeting by Joel Montgomery, Director of Administration, Kurt Denning, PPM, and Roger Kobelarsik, City Engineer. The purpose of the meeting was to go over the current infrastructure projects, where they are, what they are, and the importance of them. And we also went into Main Street project, a street skate project, which is a repair of an older Main Street, or the original, actually, the original Main Street project, or bricks that are upheaving from the way they were put in originally. And we also had a guest appearance from Main Street by Sandra Hall, and she spoke on the importance of the street skate project and how much it really does mean to downtown Worcester and tourism and to the merchants downtown, as she mentioned, about 50% of the customers downtown are from out of town. And then, one thing she wanted to emphasize was, we have to keep the momentum going as far as the street skate project. We've got to keep every project is on a timeframe, and we have to keep it going, not to lose momentum downtown. Roger Kobelarsik talked about the current street paving projects, what's coming up in the year, this year. We're going to be paving all our parts or repairing all our parts of about nine and a half miles of roads. This year, we're going to pave parts of eight collector streets, 12 minor streets, and then Kurt Denning's crew is going to do about another 12 or 13 additional minor streets with not necessarily paving the whole streets, but they can do some major repairs until they do get paved. It's going to be about $2.5 million, $2.4 million worth of projects this year. We are working on sections, a total section, we're working on sections of a total of about 43 streets this summer. Funding was spoken and was also brought up, and this year we get a little bonus because of gas tax. I think it went up to, what, $10.21 a gallon or something this year? And it's going to start in July, and this is going to give Worcester an estimated about $536,000 in additional revenue from the gas tax next year. We are also, I would say, summing up, it was, I think the main purpose was for the Infrastructure meeting tonight, the administration wanted to emphasize how interconnected all these projects are, how the planning it takes, the planning it takes to get the projects going, and how far they do get planned out, and it's sort of an intricate dance, and it's hard to mess with the projects once they're set. And if we, if you try to do too much extra at one time without the proper planning, it can really kind of put a wrench in the whole system. And the other main item, I think the main reason for it was, a lot of people, I think the public doesn't really understand sometimes how much we really do, and how much we're able to do now as opposed in the past when we had some financial issues with the recession and losing money from the state. And while, while sometimes it can be hard getting around town during the summer, the administration is making a concerted effort this year to plan the projects. So, they are, the contractors will finish a group of projects or nearly finish a group of projects first before they go on to a next group of projects to minimize any traffic disruptions in the city this year. But the one thing that I think, I know that traffic disruptions can be maddening at points at times, and I've seen it myself, it does prove that something is getting done and something positive is getting done. And when, and a little pain will bring a much safer road system in Worcester and a much nicer system, and I don't think we can argue with this.
Thank you, Mr. Bostanzic. And I think I'd like to add one thing, and I know time was short, but, you know, one of the improvement projects will be Cleveland Road from Highland North, and some people might be wondering what's going on, and I know there's probably been an article, but it's being converted from four lanes into three lanes with a center turn lane. So, just throw that out so the public has a better idea of what's going on there. Now, Mr. Malley, this is less as a public hearing, but I think you, since you're not a committee member, you just want to address Council on a matter, and this allows you to get some additional points so you can get a secret decoder ring, or anyways, I'm going to turn it over to you, sir.
He has the... Oh, thank you very much. Just wanted to start off with a higher resolution map that you'll have one version of these already in your packets, but we have close-ups on that with the memo.
Would you like us to pass that out?
If you would, please. And then I also have some available for anyone in the audience. This is a great project. If you would mind passing those along, we appreciate it.
So, since you're hyping the bike loop, are you going on that bike ride with the mayor?
I plan to be there. I don't know if I'll necessarily be able to make it as far with a little one in tow, but I'll see how far I can get.
Excuses, excuses there, Mr. Malley.
Well, I just wanted to take a few moments to share about an exciting, what I feel is an exciting project, and I think a lot of people do, and that is a proposal to connect what is going to become two of our city's primary trail systems into one singular system. And in order to accomplish this, we are petitioning the Ohio Department of Transportation for assistance through their federally funded Transportation Alternatives Program. And this is a special fund that the State of Ohio makes available for communities such as ours in partnership with the federal government, Federal Highway Administration. And this is also combined with the toll revenue collections from Interstate 80 in order to make a 95% grant, meaning that any infrastructure project we would undertake with these funds, the city would directly be paying only 5% of those costs. So, it's a great opportunity. It's a temporary opportunity, and the most critical link that we have identified, both from an infrastructure standpoint and in concert with our Wayne Trails Committee, is a link along Milltown Road, which would connect the Melrose Drive and Akron Road trail that we have to the east with the systems to the west, which include links to Freelander, the New Safety Center, Worcester City High School, Keene Elementary, Oak Hill Park, and Kenny Fields, and running down to the hospital as well as up to Health Point to the north. This one and a half mile project would cost roughly $840,000. It would generally follow the north side of East Milltown, and that would be an area where there is some utility relocation that would be needed, but most of that area is unencumbered, and there's the possibility that if funded, we would be able to move relatively quickly on this particular project. That being said, we have multiple partners that we've been coordinating with, particularly through our Wayne Trails Committee, but we wanted to advertise a public hearing in order to see if there might be any additional comments out there in any members from the public or from Council who wanted to weigh in on the project. And even after this, we continue to maintain an open door. We're always looking for comments and suggestions and ideas, so if anyone happens to hear about this after the fact, they're always welcome to email us at the City of Worcester. They can email me personally at jmalley@worsteroh.com. But that being said, I also wanted to highlight Mr. Scott Myers, who has been playing an integral role on our Wayne Trails Committee, particularly helping to develop the links regionally from the city to some of the major trail systems like the Ohio to Erie Trail, which is going to be extremely important and something that this project will help foster. So, I wanted to ask Mr. Myers if there might be anything else that we should touch on.
I think the opportunity to connect two, you know, I've been criticized because I comment a lot about the bike paths and the bike trails, and I hear the path to nowhere, you know, that they go a certain distance and stop, and people are like, now where am I supposed to go? So, the fact that this project will help connect some of the work that's already been done, and I also want to congratulate you on past grants. I hopefully will win this one, but obviously the one up Burbank Road and things, I believe that was about $1.5 million, $1.4 million of grant money, not city tax money that went into putting that in, and I appreciate all your work on the grant applications as well.
Well, thank you. It's a team effort, and the nice thing about a project like this, too, is that we are working to make it not just available for bike transportation, but it's a multi-use path available for a variety of uses. One interesting piece of information and data that we collected going through this exercise is that roughly 10% of our population who is regularly commuting to work is not doing so with a car or bus or motorized transportation, which means that they are primarily walking or bicycling. So, almost 10% of our population relies on personal mobility to get to and from their legitimate place of work. And so, a system like this will help to enhance opportunities and be able to create more safer connectivity, especially when we're looking at transporting folks from east to west. So, that being said, I wanted to open up this for any comments or questions from the audience and see if there's any thoughts, comments, or questions to add to this.
What would the improvements look like on the north side of Milltown? Is it a widening sidewalk, or...
So, this would primarily be a paved eight-foot wide trail that would be also center lined down the middle, and so that allows for easy passing, particularly when you're mixing cyclists and walkers together. So, we'll see something that looks very similar to what we see along Akron Road today and in front of Health Point up along Friendsville Road and in front of the Safety Center. So, it'll be very similar in that design and look. Very welcome. Well, that being said, I would imagine that probably concludes this, this part, but I would like to say thank you for your time and thank you for your support. And again, any further comments or questions, we're always available to help answer those. So, thank you.
And the City Council does have a piece of legislation before you this evening regarding this topic, so if you have anything, you can address it at that time as well.
Thank you, Mr. Malley. All right. Brings us to unfinished business. We have the second reading of Ordinance Number 2019 Day 08. It'll be presented by Mr. Sanders, and I will note that Mr. Matt Long's here, who's the property owner, who's requested the zoning change. Before I get to Mr. Sanders, I would ask kindly if Mr. Paolo would please read the title.
Ordinance Number 2019-08, An Ordinance Amending Parted Love and Zoning of the Codified Ordinances of the City of Worcester, Ohio to Rezone Land to I-3 Urban Industrial for Property Located on the East Vine Street.
Mr. Sanders, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. Yes, as we had discussed two weeks ago, we have a vacant lot that is to the east side of property that is owned by the applicant, and they are asking for us to rezone that from RT Residential Traditional, excuse me, Traditional Residential to I-3 Urban Industrial. The properties, all the properties to the north is currently I-3. All the properties to the east are currently I-3. So, it makes sense to make this transition for potential future utilization of the property, and it has gone through Planning Commission. They have approved it, and at this point, there's been no one that has spoken against the potential rezoning.
Succinct and well put there, Mr. Sanders. So, unless anyone has any other comments, I will consider this to have had its second Seeing nothing else...
Mr. Byten Dyke, if I could just make one comment. First reading shows 4/2/19. Our meeting was actually on 4/1, and so I think we need to show our correction on that so that if anyone would ever question us down the way, it shows the appropriate meeting dates.
Okay. Well, we'll consider Ordinance Number 2019 Day 08 as having its second reading, and thank you for your attendance today.
Well, Mr. Byten Dyke, at this point, I mean, since there really isn't any seemingly questions or arguments related to this, I would motion, I would make a motion to suspend the rules of Council and place this in third and final reading.
I will say that I did misunderstand your question last week in that we can't, we can't pass it as an emergency measure. We can, we can go ahead and, you know...
Suspend the rules.
Exactly. Suspend the rules and not deter it.
Yes. So, it still would be subject to referendum.
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. So, you've moved to suspend the rules?
When the rules of Council is.
Okay. Second by Mr. Ansel. Would you please call the roll on the suspension of the rules?
Ansel?
Yes.
Cavan?
Yes.
Warden?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Sanders?
Yes.
Silvestri?
Yes.
Bostanzic?
Yes.
Rules are suspended. Mr. Sanders?
Motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt by Mr. Sanders. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Silvestri. Any further comment, questions?
Mr. Long, you can still come back in two weeks if you want.
Don't worry, I'll probably have something else.
Something else, okay. Very good.
I have a question for Mr. Long. Are there any immediate plans for the development of this land, and if so, what are they?
Yes, we're looking at the adjacent commercial structure, which is on the Worcester Glass campus. We call it Building C. It's a small block building. We're looking to do an addition to that building.
Okay, thanks. I figured it was something like that, but thank you.
As an attorney, I want to know how you charge yourself for this.
It's his family.
Yeah, I take it out of my mother for dinner.
Good enough. All right, seeing nothing further, would you please call the roll on the motion to adopt?
Ansel?
Yes.
Cavan?
Yes.
Warden?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Sanders?
Yes.
Silvestri?
Yes.
Bostanzic?
Yes.
All right. Ordinance Number 2019 Day 08 passes, so...
Thank you.
Thanks, man.
Do well with that, Mr. Long, and I know you will. Thank you very much. Brings us to new business, first reading of Resolution Number 2019-27. It'll be presented by Mr. Silvestri. My copy of the agenda indicates it's budgeted, but that's always subject to change, as I've found out. But anyways, before we get to you, Mr. Silvestri, again, Mr. Paolo, would you please read the title?
Resolution Number 2019-27, A Resolution Authorizing the Director of Administration to Advertise According to Law and Enter Into a Contract with the Lowest and Best bidder for Lime and Biosolids Residual Management.
Mr. Silvestri, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to thank our newest city manager, Mr. Nathan Coe, for being in attendance this evening. And the piece of legislation before you tonight has to do with a six-month contract for lime and biosolids removal, and I want to highlight our newest manager wanted to get those in line with one another with some of the other contracts that we have. And also, the reason for the short-term contract is, it was touched on briefly in the presentation this evening, and as I hear, it was an idea he had during the interview process. So, as Joel said, he comes to us with a lot of fresh ideas, and I guess that started when he was being interviewed for the position here at the city of Worcester. But in addition to the lagoons that we have in which we store sludge, his idea was to add a tank, a new tank by which we can increase our capacity. I think it's about a 4-point million gallon capacity tank. We do about, we did about 15 million gallons in 2018, so it's roughly a third of our annual capacity. That would do a few things. That would help us get the sludge out to the people that use it, the farmers that use it, to put it on their fields, a lot easier. Right now, it's a process that involves kind of stirring it up into a slurry that they like to have and the proper mixture, and some of the byproducts of that obviously are the smell. And I want to also highlight the fact that our new manager is staying up to speed on the calendar, the city event calendar for our downtown events, Main Street, The Chamber, and other organizations, those types of events, and doing his best to reduce the movement of sludge during those times. So, we should see a real increase in the air quality of our downtown and a decrease in the smells that we don't appreciate. So, but I just wanted to commend his foresight and explain why this contract is so short-term. We hope to get that online soon. I think it was 2020, and we hope to bid it out by, I think, June of this year. So, we're looking forward to that, and like I said, it's going to improve the process all the way around. It's going to make it easier for people to come and pick it up, and it's going to reduce some of the less desirable effects. So, if there's any questions, he's here.
I'm all for... I'm all for listening the less desirable effect because I walk down Strawberry Alley every morning and every evening, and the prevailing wind blows directly down that alley, almost like a wind tunnel. And guess what's due west of Strawberry Alley? And I voiced my complaints once or twice to Mr. Montgomery, who's taken it in stride. And I keep hearing we're working on it. So it's nice to know we're working on it. And glad Nate brought some new thoughts to the matter.
I failed to mention, too, this would also reduce the cost. So in addition to all those other benefits, it has the added benefits of more efficient government, which goes to my point, and I've said it over and over again. I think that even in these times where we have the resources to do what we need to do, we should remain just as focused on cost savings and efficiency as we were when funds were a lot lower and when times were tougher. And I think we're going to continue to do that. Thank you. All right, if they were. Yep. Mr. Sanders?
So this, this amount that we're looking at this evening is less than last year?
This amount only covers through the end of this year. Correct.
So the dollar amount is less?
Correct.
Good.
Any other questions? Yes.
I'm just curious, do, the sludge that goes on the farmer's field, do we get any, do we sell that or do they just haul it away and then take it to the farmer?
This way you're getting paid the big buck.
If you could come up here.
You can't hide now. The spotlight's on you.
No hiding, no hiding.
I don't know if you can zoom in on him or is he too big?
So right now, historically speaking with, with most communities, this resource has been free. Typically, the municipality that produces it picks up the hauling cost. So that's what we're doing in this scenario. It's covering the hauling costs to get it to the farmer, then the farmer gets it in the field. I will not under or overcommit, but I think if we use the data behind this, this is a terrific resource. The city has taken great strides historically. This was a Class B product. Now it's a Class A product, which means we have very few restrictions on where it can go. And the limiting factors related to this product is the nutrient rate upkeep of the soil and the crops. So it opens up opportunities. There's also some other farmers that were interested in this product that, there were some contracts in place that prohibited us from working with those folks. That's now opened some other opportunities. So I'll use, for example, Blue Plains wastewater treatment is what handles the solids for Washington, D.C. If those folks there have found a way to market and at least recover some of their costs, I think there's a model there that we could look at. But you also have to understand that it's 20-plus years of giving this resource away. So there's, there's some stepping that has to be done to not limit our acres that we can work with. So hopefully that answered that.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks very much. Okay. I would make a motion that we suspend the rules and put this on third and final reading.
Well, if I'm misreading it, I think it's budgeted, but.
It is. A motion for adoption. Thank you, Mr. President.
Okay. Motion to adopt by Mr. Silvestri, second by Ms. Warden. Anything else anyone wants to know about biosolids and sludge disposal? We have our expert here. Seeing none, would you please call the roll on the motion to adopt?
Cabin?
Yes.
Warden?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Sanders?
Yes.
Silvestri?
Yes.
Bastancic?
Yes.
Ansel?
Yes.
Okay. Resolution number 2019 dash twenty-seven passes. Brings us to resolution number 2019 dash twenty-eight. It'll be presented by Mr. Ansel. And that is slated for three readings, so suspension of the rules would be required. Before I get to you, Mr. Ansel, I will once again look to Ms. DePaulo and ask her to please read the title.
Resolution number 2019 dash twenty-eight, a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into a partnership agreement with Wayne County for making an application to the Ohio Development Services Agency for a small cities' community development block grant for community housing impact and preservation, CHIP funds, and declaring an emergency.
Thank you. Mr. Ansel, the floor is yours.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. This is our normal biannual application for the very important funding available for low and moderate income housing initiatives. You've received in your council packet the overview of the CHIP partnership, and I'm going to let Mr. Malley talk about our unique collaborative partnership that we have in place. But this is a very important program for low and moderate income families to receive assistance for home repairs, for purchasing and rehabbing homes, and for landlords and renting to low and moderate income families. This targeted amount that we're going to be requesting, authorizing the mayor to request, is $962,500 over the fiscal years noted 19, 20, and 21. Worcester's portion of the partnership and the applications are graded on a number of criteria, but the community-county collaboration is a very high index on the rating scale. So our portion of the allocated amount will be $350,000. We think that that's going to be able to be involved with 16 to 20 renovation, home improvement projects within the city. It's very, very important on a timely basis to get this submission into the reviewing party. And I would like to make this a priority this evening. We all have familiarity with this important program in the past. And before I motion to suspend the rules, I would like to give Mr. Malley an opportunity to talk about the unique partnership that we have within Wayne County.
Thank you. I just wanted to highlight that this is a community program. The city of Worcester is taking the lead in the application as we have in the past. But our partners include the city of Rittman, the city of Oroville, and the Wayne County Commissioners through the Wayne County Planning Department. I will say that we do have a general budget goal for each partner that they're looking to see having funds reinvested in. But as a partnership, we do routinely share those funds to help make sure, one, that we can spend these funds with our neighbors as opposed to having to return them to the state if there's not demand locally. And two, this has been a process that we've utilized for the last roughly four years, and it's been a fabulous partnership. It's been a really great program for the city of Worcester, and it's been a really fantastic program for our neighbors all around. And this is an opportunity by which we can also find other ways of trying to address opportunities to help repair infrastructure and help assist people who might be lower income, who happen to have access to real estate, actually be able to hold on to it. That maintains the real estate tax base. It helps to keep individuals off of other longer-term public assistance, which is costlier. And it helps to keep our neighborhoods intact and rebuild them. Since the inception of the program, over 600 homes through this partnership, or well, between both Wayne County's administration of this grant and the city of Worcester's, over 600 homes have been saved from repairs that would have ultimately led to possible condemnation. It's also something that I want to say that with the current grant cycle, we still have funding available. So if anybody happens to come across somebody who is in need, our CHIP office coordinator, Ms. Tanya Sargent with the Wayne Metropolitan Housing Authority, is still accepting applications for this current year. And we are starting the waiting list for the upcoming funding cycle as well. It's a fantastic program. And actually, Mr. Nathan Coe's team recently referred to us a city resident who was also in need and facing a problem where we would normally be forced to stop utility services. And through this program, we're able to help solve that issue and at no cost to the homeowner. So this has just been a fantastic program. It's a highly competitive application, but we will be putting our best foot forward, and we have a great team. So happy to answer any, any further questions anyone may have. Thank you.
I don't have any questions, but I know through working with, with Mr. Malley over the years that this program wouldn't be what it is without him. He has expertise and obviously great skills at grant writing. So, so part of this is a result of his efforts. So thank you, Mr. Malley.
Yes, thank you.
Well, recognizing the importance of this program and the positive impact that it has on the city of Worcester, I'd hope tonight that we can have unanimous support, that we authorize the mayor through Jonathan's grant writing in collaboration with Wayne County to submit our application and get this to where it needs to be post haste. So with that, I would motion to suspend the rules and move resolution 2019 dash twenty-eight to third and final reading this evening.
Motion to suspend the rules by Mr. Ansel. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Myers. Would you please call the roll on the motion to suspend the rules?
Bastancic?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Sanders?
Yes.
Silvestri?
Yes.
Warden?
Yes.
Ansel?
Yes.
Cabin?
Yes.
Rules are suspended. I look to you again, Mr. Ansel.
Motion to adopt, Mr. President.
Motion to adopt by Mr. Ansel. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Bastancic. Any other questions, comments? Seeing none, would you please call the roll on the motion to adopt?
Bastancic?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Sanders?
Yes.
Silvestri?
Yes.
Warden?
Yes.
Ansel?
Yes.
Cabin?
Yes.
Resolution number 2019 dash twenty-eight passes. We'll turn the resolution number 2019 dash twenty-nine, and this is kind of part and parcel with what we just passed. It'll be presented by Mr. Ansel. And again, it is slated for three readings. Before I get to you again, Mr. Ansel, I will ask nicely, Ms. DePaulo, would you please read the title?
Resolution number 2019 dash twenty-nine, a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with the Wayne Metropolitan Housing Authority for administrative consulting services for a small cities' community development block grant for a community housing impact and preservation CHIP program and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Ansel, the floor is yours.
Yes, as Mr. Malley noted, in past years, the Wayne Metropolitan Housing Authority is the clearinghouse or the administrator for the partnership that is able to assist the residents. It's a monumental task. There's a lot of touching involved and connecting and following up. And it's very important to have expertise in this area to help homeowners and landlords with any questions as they work through this process of receiving the funding. We have had a great track record with the Metropolitan Housing Authority, Wayne Metro Housing Authority, and all of the partnerships in this collaboration, the county, the other cities noted, as well as Worcester would like to continue to maintain that relationship with the organization that knows how to get the results that we've yielded in the past. And this has been consistent with previous applications. It is reviewed favorably during the review process to have a third-party professional that has the expertise of administering these programs. So keeping with our historical success, I would also motion to suspend the rules of council and keep the second component of our CHIP funding request unified through the Wayne Metropolitan Housing Authority.
Motion to suspend the rules by Mr. Ansel, second by Mr. Myers. Would you please call the roll on the suspension of the rules?
Myers?
Yes.
Sanders?
Yes.
Silvestri?
Yes.
Warden?
Yes.
Ansel?
Yes.
Cabin?
Yes.
Rules are suspended. Motion to adopt by Mr. Ansel. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Warden. Any further discussion or questions? It's pretty self-evident that with the funds we needed, it's someone to administrate the awarding of the funds. Seeing none, would you please call the roll on the motion to adopt?
Myers?
Yes.
Sanders?
Yes.
Silvestri?
Yes.
Warden?
Yes.
Ansel?
Yes.
Cabin?
Yes.
Bastancic?
Yes.
Okay. Resolution number 2019 dash twenty-nine passes. We heard a little bit about this, well, we heard a lot about this by Mr. Malley. We'll look at resolution number 2019 dash thirty. It'll be presented by Mr. Myers. It is slated for three readings. And again, I look to you, Ms. DePaulo, to read the title.
Resolution number 2019 dash thirty, a resolution authorizing the mayor to submit an application to the Ohio Department of Transportation for grant monies, to apply such funds if awarded, and to execute any necessary documents in connection therewith and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Myers, the floor is yours.
Thank you. President Byten dyke, I don't think I can say anything more eloquently than Jonathan Malley has already explained this. If there are any questions, I think this is an important part of completion of our bike loop. I will note that the bike path, both the one that connects us to Fredericksburg and the Ohio Erie Trail, as well as the loop around the city, have been very much spearheaded by our mayor. He's a biking enthusiast, and I do appreciate his support of the Wayne Trails Committee as well as what we do in the city. If there's any questions, though, I can't answer the hard ones. I can answer the easy ones. But Jonathan's still here for the hard.
Well, are you going to keep it on first reading or?
I was, oh, no, I'm not. I'd like to make a motion to suspend the rules.
All right. Motion to suspend the rules by Mr. Myers. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Silvestri. Would you please call the roll on the motion to suspend the rules?
Sanders?
Yes.
Silvestri?
Yes.
Warden?
Yes.
Ansel?
Yes.
Cabin?
Yes.
Bastancic?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Rules are suspended.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt this.
Okay. Motion to adopt by Mr. Myers, second by Mr. Ansel. Now you can.
Is there any further questions or comments by anyone on City Council?
I would like to add that I know if the public was paying attention and the audience, you saw Mr. Malley's excitement when he explained part of this earlier. And I think not only is it a key piece, a key connecting piece to our overarching plan for bike paths, but I just want to highlight the fact that 80% is, is coming from, if we get this grant, I should say, if we get this grant, basically, the city of Worcester will only pay 5%. Is that not true? Okay. So, so we have 80% being covered by the State of Ohio Turnpike Funds. I'm sorry, that's the 15%, and 80% is, the balance is coming from the State of Ohio Turnpike Funds, 80% from the grant, and then we only pay the 5%. I think that's a phenomenal feat when you consider, especially the cost of the project. Eight hundred and forty thousand is for the grant, correct?
Yes.
Correct, yes.
Okay. And the cost of the project, you said it was over, over a million?
Oh, I apologize. Whole project will be eight hundred and forty thousand.
Okay.
But the city will be responsible for only 5% of that.
Forty-two thousand. And let's not lose sight, this can also be treated as a sidewalk. So to get, only pay 5% for having a nice sidewalk is quite the coup.
Yes.
One thing that we found in Jonathan's explanation is the trail is a 10-foot trail. So it's five feet in each direction essentially, not, not an eight-foot trail. So nice.
Now, if you only can get the trail extended to Smithville, down 585, then we'll, then we'll be, I think, almost complete, except for that little section to get to the Fredericksburg trail.
Well, we'll definitely keep working on it.
Yeah, well, good job. Ms. Warden?
I've seen, now that spring has sprung, I've seen a few people out.
I've seen, now that spring has sprung, I've seen a few people out using the trail and it's wonderful to see. I think it'll be a great addition to the city of Worcester. There's one thing that I have gotten a number of comments from the public or really questions, and that pertains to something we don't really want to think about right now, but shoveling. And they are wondering if the bike path is their responsibility to clear. So perhaps that would be something that we could include in one of our utility bills or something down the road that might explain that more thoroughly to them.
Absolutely. As we go forward with this, we'll have additional public hearings, particularly talking to the property owners, and at that time, we discuss what specific responsibilities are theirs and what's specific responsibilities for the cities.
Okay, thank you.
One of the things that has been expressed to the property owners that the trail is already in front of, like Burbank Road, is a normal sidewalk is four feet wide, so we told people that that's all they're responsible for clearing during the winter is a four-foot section of that 10-foot trail. So now, we may have to adjust that thought process as time goes on, depending on what the usage is and stuff, but our snow events are limited, so we think it'll work for the time being.
Thank you.
Anything else?
I believe I've already made a motion?
We're ready to call a roll.
Seeing no further discussion or questions, would you please call the roll on the motion to adopt?
Sanders?
Yes.
Silvestri?
Yes.
Warden?
Yes.
Ansel?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
Bostancic?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Resolution number 2019-30 passes. We'll turn our attention to resolution number 2019-31. It's the penultimate piece of legislation. It'll be presented by Mr. Kevin. It is a budgeted item, so it will not require three readings. But before I get to you, Mr. Kevin, I will ask Ms. DePaulo to please read the title.
Resolution number 2019-31, a resolution authorizing the police chief to utilize a local vendor at below Ohio State bid pricing and enter into a contract for the purchase of three Ford Interceptors.
And I guess before I get to you, Mr. Kevin, I've said it and I've said it again, I think there's nothing worse when a community does not upgrade and keep their fleet of police cars in good and working order. I think of some of the major cities here in northeastern Ohio when I see sometimes news reports and see some of the state of repair of some of those vehicles. I think it's a poor reflection on the community, so I don't have a vote, but I hardly endorse the program that we've had since I've been on council is when we can afford it to make sure that we upgrade our equipment, being either police vehicles or plow trucks, dump trucks, VAC trucks, fire trucks, and ambulances. So hopefully, we will continue to do that. So having said that, I'll let you speak there, Mr. Kevin.
You know, you wanted to keep a short meeting.
I was going to ask you if you're going to make a motion.
I've already forced him to make the motion, so dispense with the formalities.
Yes, thank you. As President Biden said, yes, this is a budgeted item, and yeah, he stole my notes. But this does, it keeps our police fleet in solid, good operating order. The other thing that I would highlight too that wasn't mentioned was the police chief did communicate to me that he would like to, you know, rotate some other vehicles through using the older vehicles to replace a couple of other vehicles and to use those for less obvious needs. So again, budgeted, minimum pricing, police fleet in good operating order, what's not to like? Chief's here, if anyone has any questions. And I would make a motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt by Mr. Kevin, is there a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Silvestri. I saw you had your hand up, Mr. Silvestri.
Yes, I want to thank the police chief and his administration for reaching out and answering questions with regard to this. I think it's great that we can do this at below state bid pricing from a local vendor, and I wasn't sure if, you know, we needed to give credit where credit is due, but I just wanted to, I guess I was curious to know if it was someone sympathetic to our cause that was kind of making, giving us a super low bid, but I'm not sure if we've been able to do this in the past from a local.
So the city ordinance says it has to be at or below state bid to buy from a local vendor. There's not a lot of meat on the bone when you're talking about a state bid, but I think when that, he was $43 under state bid for a vehicle, so it's not much, but it's something.
It's great. It's great. I think it's great to go local, and if we can even go below state bid, that's phenomenal.
We keep the money in the community as opposed to sending it down to some other cities, so.
And I guess I just want to make the point whoever that is will consider it a donation to our cause, right? Super low price, thank you.
The other good thing, as Mr. Biden said, is if we buy them from who has the state award, then we have to drive down to Columbus and pick them up and get all three of them back here. Getting them locally, we don't have to do that.
So seeing nothing else, would you please call the roll on the motion to adopt?
Silvestri?
Yes.
Warden?
Yes.
Ansel?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
Bostancic?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Sanders?
Yes.
Resolution number 2019-31 passes.
That brings us to our final piece of legislation, resolution number 2019-32. It'll be presented by Mr. Kevin, and I do note this is slated for three readings. If you would, please, for the last time, read the title of a resolution and take it away, Ms. DePaulo.
Resolution number 2019-32, a resolution authorizing the police chief to enter into a contract with Axon for the purchase of Axon Fleet two N-Car cameras.
Mr. Kevin, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Biden. It is time to replace cameras for the police department. The N-Car cameras are older. Part of the reason that it is drawn up the way it is is because it is a new vendor, Axon, that's the people that provide, that we buy the body cameras from. So with this purchase, as explained to me by the police department, this would, they would be able to interface better than what we had had previously. We wouldn't have to rely on another vendor for information. The other thing was, and chief's here, because I know I'm stumbling through this, but cloud-based, you would be able to save information that way versus keeping it at the station here, and we can pick and choose what we want to have them save, and it's readily available in case we do need to go to court and use that. Was there anything you wanted to add to that?
It's, so the current system that we have is basically not operational. It's not working. It's an old server-based system. It's to the point where IT has to dump those servers onto an external hard drive, and I have to basically keep them in evidence. Axon is a cloud-based system, and the nice part is evidence, let's say, the prosecutor's office, they have a login and password, so they can just log in and pull up all the cases or label with a case number, they can pull it up. They can also share a link to the defense, so they can basically just email a link to them. You don't have to actually burn a disk anymore. You can do all that. One of the reasons this is in front of you tonight is that this is a five-year contract. So the total amount you see is actually spread over five years, and we put the language in there, an amount not to exceed that, because right now, Axon and our IT department are kind of trying to figure some things out. Axon is saying, hey, you need these modems to make this work. Our IT department is saying, hey, based on the specs, the modems we have, we think will work. So if we don't need those modems, we're going to be able to save some money, but just in case we can't, that's why I put a not to exceed amount, that money's there if we have to buy those, but if we don't, we should be able to save some money off of that. The other last piece is they do link with the body cams. It's a pretty neat feature in the cruisers. When you turn the overhead lights on in the police car, the camera in the car will kick on, and it's Bluetooth linked to your body cam, your body cam will also kick on. The other thing it has the capability to do is you can actually set a radius, 30 feet, 50 feet, 75 feet. Any police car or body cam that crosses that threshold will automatically kick on too. So if you have a hectic, chaotic event, multiple officers arriving on scene, you don't have to worry about turning your cameras on. That system will turn them on automatically, and it saves all the data in one spot. So instead of two separate systems that you have to access to try to pull data from, it dumps them all in the same spot. If you had six officers on a scene, each with a body cam and a cruiser cam, that's 12 pieces of video you'd have to try to find and sort through. This puts them all in one spot, makes it much easier to fulfill a records request, something like that.
Very, very impressive. Yes, Joe?
Just one point of clarification, Matt, the total $141,000 is not in 2019.
No, so.
You have at least the first years in the budget.
Correct. We kind of knew this was coming, so we built the initial amount into this year's budget, and then the additional four years as a five-year contract, we would build into our operating budget over those next four years.
Okay.
And based upon that, it would be our suggestion, and this is just a drafting mistake here, that right now, it says the purchase is budgeted for 2019. We would suggest that, say, if you amend it on the floor to read, and we'll budget in 2020, 2021, and 2022, and 2023. So that way, to add the next several years, so that 2020, 2021, 2022, and 2023, because the total cost of this is going to be spread over five years.
Right, I get that, but those subsequent years have not been budgeted.
They have not. I would say the purchase is budgeted for 2019 and will be budgeted for the following year. So that way, we don't have to come back and do the same legislation each year.
We have done similar things for like two-year, two-year, three-year contracts in the past. We've done two-year. I'm trying to think of someone we've done.
Well, I can understand entering, being able to enter into a contract and purchase. I'm not sure that authorizing the expenditure of funds four years down the road, I'm comfortable with. I don't know how council feels.
I'm not seeing a yearly increase either. I mean, it seems like, I mean, if it's going to.
It's a fixed-price contract.
Right. We're holding that cost.
Right, but the monies have, the monies have not been allocated for those next few years.
Could we not amend it to be accepting the five-year term, including subsequent years if approved in the budget? When, would it be budgeted in the budget? Unless it's somehow lined out, it would be part of our budget, so.
I think that makes sense.
I mean, I think it's hard to not approve a five-year contract. They're entering into this to give us a fixed-cost agreement. In order to get this cost fixed pricing, I think we should accept that five-year commitment.
Right, and I have no problem with that. It's, you know, the rubber stamping the amount and not at least having a chance to review it, because I think the way.
I agree, yeah. But I think if we just add the term, when approved in subsequent budget years to that, we'd be fine.
Yeah, I don't have any problem with, you know, entering into the contract. It just, I get a little queasy about approving something where some of us might not.
Might not be here.
Might not be here for whatever reason, so. And, you know, while we're kind of a little off, you know, we're foolish not to do this because not only does it aid in prosecution, but when someone has a complaint about the police department, boy, it really shuts it down when you've got it in living color, so to speak, that what they said happened isn't at all what happened. So we would be foolish not to make this available to us since we can afford it, because I'll tell you, defending some sort of liability lawsuit, we're going to spend a lot more money than what we're spending on this purchase.
Agreed, and we're not going to stop using cameras three years from now, so.
So I would like to know exactly how you want the amendment to work.
Well, so would I.
Mr. Scavelli, could you please amend, give us an offer of how you'd like to see this amended?
Mr. Scavelli, can't we say we are authorizing the $145,000 expenditure for the upgrade in the Acxiom camera system and software to be allocated over a five-year contract period commencing 2019?
I think that's, do you think that sounds okay? I think that's.
That sounded like a motion.
What he said.
That sounds very nice.
Carrie, can you play that back?
I think it's a five-year contract.
Yes, exactly. We're authorizing the expenditure over a five-year contract. 60 months, yes. That's the way I would see it within the contract, context.
Motion to accept John's amendment?
Sure.
Do we suspend the rules first?
See, that's where, that's where it gets, see, this is what happens when you're really kind of melding two things. One is a contract, and two is the expenditure of money, so, you know.
But, Mr. President, I have a question. This is fully budgeted, though, correct?
Well, I think just the amount.
For 2019?
For 2019.
That's correct, correct.
And that's why I have issue with, you know, the subsequent years aren't budgeted and, you know, I don't think we can authorize the expenditure of those.
Oh, I agree. I agree.
Subsequent amounts.
Then we'll prepay the whole thing this year if you'd like.
Wait, Mr. President.
Those aren't, that's not budgeted either.
That's all right, we can still pass it.
You are always the stickler on those things, so.
We can.
I was just trying to preempt you from saying these aren't.
But this is for my police department. They can have whatever they want.
You had my take on it. I'm just, I'm trying to figure out procedurally how to go about it, because I have no problem with to enter into a contract.
Chief Fisher, when do you need an answer on this? Sometime before dark.
Listen, my part is done. The legal minds now have to figure out the contract.
Is there, does it have to be passed this evening?
Yeah, I don't know if we can't say the cost of such contract.
Mr. Scavelli, can we redraft this?
Why don't we say something like this, and maybe this will, maybe it'll be kind of long, what you said initially, Chris, right? If we say that, and enter into a contract for five years, the purchase had been budgeted for 2019, okay? And is, you can say it's expected to be budgeted or will be budgeted for the following years. We're not approving that expenditure, we're just approving our contract, and then it will be budgeted from that point forward. Does that make sense?
Yeah, I was just going to make it a little simpler, because, you know, my client gets charged by the word, so I tried to be succinct.
You're forward.
So.
Not making it simpler.
In Section 2, I would say the cost of such contract for 2019 will not exceed the amount budgeted. And then, then each year, when the other amounts come due, it can be then entered into the budget.
So do you want to say, we want to amend the wear code, whereas the purchase is budgeted for 2019, and there's such a big. for 2019, and for subsequent four years, and then add the cost for that such contract project for 2019 will not exceed the amount budgeted? Does that seem sufficient?
Mm-hmm.
The only thing I heard the, our finance director say is, he does need, somewhere needs to say five years.
So that's what we're going to put that. We'll put that in the.
That's in the other section already.
Section 1, the police chief is authorized to enter into a five-year contract.
Yeah.
With Axon.
Does that work?
Can we, like, rewrite it and present it next time?
That would be my recommendation.
And it'll be correct.
Keep it on first reading this evening, revise it, and submit it in next session.
That sounds, I wouldn't want you to get sideway with the auditors and find out that your, you know, 25-year skein of success is derailed by a certain, this little contract.
We'd have it on tape.
All right. Well, we will consider resolution number 2019-32 as having its first reading, and it was a great exercise in legislative procedure, and I appreciate everyone that participated in it.
Since this was budgeted the way it is, it's not written to have more than one reading.
Well, that's okay. We can keep it on first reading.
Well, yeah, well, the problem is, it seemed like we were passing amounts that weren't budgeted, so.
Right, we were.
So that's why I said I think it's three readings, and.
Gotcha.
And I think getting that language cleaned up will make at least, you know, if some of us aren't here in four years, that at least the underlying resolution will maybe be a roadmap as to why this is before council or on the budget. All right, that brings us to Ms. Alainus. Let's start with Mr. Ansel.
Yes, I'd like to schedule a first-quarter financial update review work session on Monday, May 6, at 6:30 in council chambers.
6:30?
6:30.
Okay, anything else?
That's it, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Ansel. Mr. Bostanzik?
Just one thing, I just want to add something the mayor was talking about with Worcester Transit. From what I understand, I talked to a representative of community action, they're also going to be, I guess they're placing posts and signs at all the stops now, with the times now, so.
Great.
This is just what they're going to look like. So every stop will have a sign with the time when it's supposed to be. Just thought that was a really nice addition.
Thanks for bringing that to our attention. Mr. Cavan?
I don't have anything to add.
Mr. Myers?
Thank you, President Biden. I have a couple of things. I just wanted to welcome Mr. Coe, and I would, for one, I can't speak for council, would be nice to maybe meet out at your facility. I know we did that a few years ago. It was very educational, and I know there's been a lot of changes since then, and since you've been involved with the city. So I'd be willing to do that if time was so available, so.
Depending on the prevailing wind that day.
And thank you again for coming this evening. The other one thing I wanted to mention, a friend of mine, Patrice Smith, today completed the Boston Marathon. I think it was her 15th time. She placed 15th in her age group, and she was among, I believe it was just 21 or 22 runner's from Worcester that participated this year. But I just wanted to say special thanks to Patrice, and well done. For those who were marathon runners, 3 hours and 26 minutes.
It was actually 3 hours 11 minutes. By the gun time.
Okay, so faster than I could talk about it, but yeah. Thank you very much, that's all.
Mr. Silvestri?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. A couple of things while we're, while the comment from Mr. Myers, with respect to our new utilities managers fresh in our minds, I'd be happy to get with him and schedule a public utilities meeting out at, at the site. So we'll be looking at that and come up with a date for that. So in addition to that, I want to thank Mr. Malley for all of his grant-writing work. Looking forward to this Milltown Connection Bike Trail that we've spoken of. And I just wanted to ask the question, I know one of my constituents had asked about a connector improving Cleveland Road. I guess, I just want, I know, I know the costs were deemed cost-prohibitive based on a number of factors, and I want to thank Joel for all the research that he had done. But I guess, both with the future improvement of Cleveland Road, and with this connector, I'm looking at the map, and I just think that there's a few different options that we would have on the map, and it could be a great north-south additional piece to that. So I just want to throw it out there that it might be worth looking at. Now, I'm relying a lot on Mr. Malley's grant-writing skills to make this a reality, but I just wanted to throw that out there and see if the timing might be a little more, better suited to looking at this deeper, so. Thank you.
Ms. Warren?
I have nothing to add, thank you.
And Mr. Sanders?
Nothing to add this evening, Mr. President.
I see Mr. Ansel move to adjourn. Is there a second?
Second.
Second, and everyone, we're adjourned.